In this regular council meeting, it is Monday, December twentieth, twenty twenty one.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I don't know why I want to.
Senate.
Well, roll call please.
Mayor Loughlin.
Yeah.
Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Here.
Goodweiler.
Here.
Stulman.
Yeah.
All right, the first item on the agenda is to swear in. The mayor and two new, two existing council people.
All right.
So we gotta be on the camera?
On the camera.
Okay. All right, Roger, raise your right hand. Say, I state your name.
I, Roger Loughlin.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
And then I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the, of the office of mayor in the city of West Branch.
Discharge all duties of the office of mayor in the city of West Branch.
As of now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
All right, you're it.
I'm the mayor.
Congratulations.
So I am going to swear in Nick and Jody together.
Same time.
Right, yeah. You get together. Yeah. Yours.
I'm gonna read. Same thing, oh no, it's different.
No.
Just don't put mayor on it.
Everything's the same but mayor.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna start out, I, um, state your name, please.
I, Nick Goodweiler.
I, Jody Stulman.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability. And then I will faithfully.
Faithfully and part, impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the office of city council.
Discharge. Discharge all duties of the office of city council.
In the city of West Branch as now or hereafter required by law.
In the city of West Branch is now or hereafter required by law.
Thank you.
Is that always so different?
Yes.
You can sign that.
Sign it and give it back to me and I'll check that.
Leslie. Um, before we get. Say it again. Um, item six is, I need a motion to approve the agenda. But before we move any farther, I want to read a letter I got from, uh. Oh, no vote.
Yeah.
Vote please.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
I received a letter from, uh, along with Chief Hannah, from Pastor Chad Whaley of the Bethany Lutheran Church, giving a glowing reference to Officer Kathy Steen. And I wanted to, I just wanna read it out loud. Greetings and thank you for all of your, you do for our wonderful community. I just wanted to let you know all how very blessed we, we are to have Officer Steen as part of our police department. All our officers are exceptional. However, I have the opportunity to work with Officer Steen on a variety of needs that arise within our community, including just this morning. This was December thirteenth. Several weeks ago, a gentleman came into the church who was transient, seeking assistance in getting to Nebraska. After several minutes visiting with the individual, I became a bit uneasy based on his demeanor and stepped outside to contact Kathy. She promptly came over and together we worked to find a solution which would have benefited this gentleman greatly. But he chose rather to be dropped off in Iowa City and trek his way to Nebraska. It was getting cold and I secured a jacket and boots from the Bethany's clothes closet. On her way to Iowa City, Kathy called and wondered if she could take the gentleman to Walmart so he could get some warm socks and sleep in bed. We utilized funds from the West Branch area religious council to do this. Chad says, I am grateful for her willingness to assist me and her compassionate heart in going above and beyond to help this individual. It is such a relief to know I can contact her in a situation such as this when I'm not sure who I'm dealing with and what their background may be. This is from Chas, Pastor Chad Whaley at Bethany Church. So I've heard similar stories about Kathy as pertaining to the school. So I just wanna say thank you Kathy for, for all that you do in the police department for, I know you do those things behind the scenes that we may not hear about. Um, so this is a good example of some recognition. Thank you. Um, all right, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is the minutes from December sixth of the regular council meeting, uh, records destruction of the community state bank check drafts and the claims for the month of, uh, claims and the October monthly financial report. Motion please. You. Second. Yeah. Um, any questions? Anywhere?
Um.
Comments?
I will not approve the new truck. For Public Works.
Move that. Um, I guess that would be a no vote to approve the claims then from you.
I approve everything but that, yeah.
You know, it's for how to. So ever pull out the item in the, exact item in, we'll vote on that separately. So we have a motion to approve the claims and monthly finance report excluding the description on there is.
Be the Ford truck.
Ford truck for Public Works.
That a motion from Jody then?
Well, we can see if the people who did the first motion is okay. Are you okay with that?
To modify your motion to exclude the new Public Works truck.
Yeah.
And we'll vote on it.
Yeah, we'll vote, yeah, we'll vote on everything but first and then vote on the truck second.
It sounds fair.
Okay.
Okay, Nick, for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, then we will vote on Leslie on everything except the, the line item of the new truck.
Okay, councilperson Sexton.
Yes.
Goodweiler. Miller.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Okay, so just for the public record that on, so now, do I need a second motion?
Actually, they haven't moved to approve the truck purchase.
I need a motion to approve the, the twenty twenty-two Ford truck for Public Works at forty-nine thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars is the line item.
Okay.
To move.
Jerry seconds. Um, any discussion?
Was this a truck that was, uh, on the radar to get in the budget?
I thought so, yes.
It was in Matt's budget, yes. Um, he budgeted, I wanna say this top of my head, maybe seventy-four thousand in equipment and that comes from about four different funds, since that truck is used by four different apartments, so it's water, sewer, general fund, or sorry, road use tax. I think he's got set aside in there. Um, how he's purchasing it, the set aside is not being used. That's one thing I do wanna ask you guys. Um, budget work session, what the role of set aside is, but I, for the purposes of the budget, he did ask for it. Um, I'm okay with having that discussion come budget work session. I think that's a valid point. Um, but he did ask for it in this year's budget.
Okay, so this is a scheduled purchase.
Yes.
Do we know which truck he's replacing?
I'll have Matt chime in on that.
That's why I saw him in his car.
I will get that answer.
Okay.
I do, I do believe it should be a replacement though. This keep adding trucks, not getting rid of any. There's, there's no need in having a different truck for every day of the week.
Yeah.
I wanna say he was getting rid of the truck that he was pulling the leaf.
Big brother?
You got an older truck that they pulled the leaf truck, leaf backup with.
I can tell you, sorry.
I'm not sure.
I don't know. All right, so we have a motion to, uh, by Tom to approve in a second, so let's go ahead and vote.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman.
No.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item A is communications, um, open forum, if, um, someone would like to address the council before us, we do have one already scheduled. Um, I'm gonna let Nick Schuman go ahead from the West Branch Public Library. He's going to explain the strategic plan, which they just finished. Um, so Nick, the floor is yours.
Thank you, let me go ahead and bring this up. Okay. So I wanted to say thank you for letting me speak again. Uh, normally you won't hear this much from me. Um, trying to see my, okay, I think you guys can see that now, okay. Um, so thank you for letting me, we, me speak on this, uh, today. I, like I said, you won't normally hear this much from me. Um, but this is an important thing for the library. It basically guides everything that we do, um, throughout the next three years. Um, first, I wanted to talk about why we created the plan. Uh, it's a, is a tool that analyzes our community and finds out what, uh, the community needs and then fits the library services and goals to the community to the best, uh, meet those needs. Uh, I'm a huge believer in the process. I'm really excited to start a new set, um, just because I'm looking at accomplishing new things to, to help the community. Um, the big item really is that, uh, this is required by the state, uh, for us to have one. Uh, the requirements are that it's a written plan, doesn't exceed more than five years. They recommend fewer than that. They recommend about three, just because things happen so quickly. Um, that it, uh, is based on community needs and community data, uh, that it contains a mission statement that describes what the library's purpose is in the community, uh, and of course, uh, that it contains goals and measurable objectives. We have to have, um, a way to determine if it's successful or not, a quantity, a quality of service, and that has to have a timeline on those things, just so we can evaluate how well we've done. And then again, we can have to, we have to evaluate it, uh, annually. We can't just leave it on the shelf. Uh, so a quick note on the overall purpose of the plan, uh, like I said, it guides everything we do, uh, staff focuses, budget goals, uh, events, services we provide. Uh, I wanna say that our, our service area librarian starts out in her planning processes, um, by stating that, uh, we have to go into this thinking that, uh, nobody's gonna give us, give us extra money, extra space, uh, more staff, uh, to accomplish these things. It's what we do with what we have. Um, so I don't want you to think that we're, we're gonna start asking for a bunch of money based on this. Um, this is, uh, what we do as, as part of our, our normal operation. Uh, our quick, uh, quick rundown of our process started out with a community survey to assess the current library. Um, did community interviews throughout April and May, uh, reviewed community statistics and demographics in May. We've got, um, we chose our service responses in May and Ju, May through July. Those are, um, I'll explain in a bit. We wrote our goals in September and October. Our objectives in October and November, and then we got the plan approved last Tuesday, so, uh, you're getting it fresh off the, the, the meeting, I guess. Um, I do, oh, before I forget, I do wanna give you printed copies of this, but of course our printer, uh, ran out of toner, uh, and we're without a service contract at the moment because, uh, we've been waiting for three months for our new printer to come in, so, uh, we're still waiting on that. Uh, but I'll give you one in January, so that you can have a, a printed copy. Um, so how we started, uh, we conducted a basic SWOT analysis, basically, uh, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Asking people what they, they wanted to see, what the, the strengths of the community has, um, to, to reach our goals uh, and then what the weaknesses and challenges that we had, uh, in reaching those goals. Overall, we interviewed nineteen different people over seventeen different interviews by phone and Zoom. Uh, normally we do a focus group, but, um, just thought it was better not to bring people together into a room, uh, for, for a couple hours at a time. Um, we did, we tried to get the best cross-section we could of the community, um, get a mix of roles in the community, ages, jobs, uh, stations in life, backgrounds, and we, we, we interviewed anybody from, uh, we, we did age of, of high schoolers up to, to retirees, um, members of, of different service agencies, business owners, uh, we tried to get a, like I said, a, a good cross-section. Um, and these are our results for, for the community input, wishes, wishes, aspirations, dreams. Um, this is a condensed few. You have, uh, in the packet, the, the full strategic plan, which creates a more lengthy version, but this can fit on a single slide, so I'm using this. Uh, first up, almost everyone wants to see new and improved businesses. Uh, they wanna see our community grow. Um, and they wanna see a wider, uh, they wanna see a, um, a wider diversity of people coming into the community. Uh, of course, they want a splash pad or a pool. That's not something that we can do a ton for, uh, as a library, but we can offer, do things like offer more water, uh, water events. Um, they want more housing, more and affordable, uh, apartments and condos. Um, you'll see these kinda combined together, social events trails, and then, um, uh, rec center, social events and trails kinda fit into things to do. Um, assisted living and, and there were a few people that mentioned things like, um, uh, library expansion, the streets, community collaboration, that sort of thing. Uh, existing strengths, um, almost everybody, seventy-one percent said straight off, you know, they were excited about the new, the new school expansion. They thought it was great for the community on a number of ways. Um, you'll remember that I said in the, um, prior one that people wanted more businesses. Well, our strengths are, one of the top ones is they love our current businesses. They just want more of it. Uh, they like the, um, selection that we have. They like the community ties that the owners have. Um, they also like the small town charm of West Branch. Uh, they feel like it's generally a safe place to live. Uh, then we kinda get into an interesting combination, the organizations, National Park Presidential Library, uh, our library, the Parks and Rec. Um, the people that are involved in the community and, and trying to do things, um, so the organizations, uh, the nonprofits, uh, the charities that are in town, people really enjoy those. Uh, I believe there's, the churches are mentioned in there as well. Um, I didn't write that one down in the condensed, uh, version, but, um, people like all of the, the time that people are putting in to try and make the, um, the community better. Um, the National Park is of course a strength, um, because it brings people in, um, as does the proximity to, to Iowa City and corridor, uh, the corridor. Um, and of course, the potential of growth, and then, uh, a few people there at the bottom mentioned, uh, the historic properties of the community. Weaknesses, um, the first is overall feeling, I think, for, of people of wanting more. They, they see what West Branch can be, the growth that we've had, and they, they want to, they want more of it. Uh, maybe not feeling like it's moving fast enough or, or having subsets of the community pushing against that. Um, again, you'll see local businesses come up. Um, again, it's, it's hard for, uh, a small town to have businesses because there's not population there to support that. Um, it's also hard for a new business to operate in a historic building because a historic building is hard, is, is not cheap to expense, uh, to, to operate expensive, uh, expense-wise. Um, they mentioned housing, thinking that it's a little bit, um, uh, that it's more expensive and that it's not bringing in, uh, diversity, uh, diverse age groups, um, which again came in on number four, for lack of diversity, we're not exactly known for that. Um, for the second number four here kinda ties in with the, uh, local businesses, there's just not enough people to, to provide a, a strong tax base. Um, and then again, in, in six here, you see community, commuter community, which means that, um, you know, people are traveling outside of town to, to work and shop, and then they're coming back and they're not really getting involved. Uh, it makes it harder, even though we're growing, to find volunteers for different groups within the community. Um, and maybe even, uh, having less involvement than when we were smaller. Uh, and then again, the trail is just bonding those trails to be connected to the Hoover Trail. So, from these interviews and from the community data, we came up with these three service responses, or which are the general overall topics that the library will be looking at over the next three years. Um, know your community slash be an informed citizen. That's a holdover actually from the last plan. Uh, we want residents to know about the services and events as well as making, uh, informed decisions on local issues. Uh, we want to bring the kind of, the community together basically and have everybody to have a good life. Um, build successful enterprises, uh, promote businesses and nonprofits, uh, ensures the directors, managers, employees, the volunteers have everything that they need to develop, uh, and maintain a strong organization. This is both, this hits both the idea of the, uh, the, you know, support and the desire for more local businesses as well as, uh, helping to support the local community groups. Uh, making those both stronger and making it easier for both of them to exist. And then last one was celebrating versi, diversity, uh, which promotes the appreciation of other cultures, histories, beliefs, uh, abilities, ages, any type of way of living around us, um, just bringing those ideas and, and trying to bring those all, um, so that we better understand one another. Uh, so these, I'm actually go through real quick, the, uh, quick rundown of what our actual goals and, and objectives are, what we're actually going to be doing. So the first one, uh, in know your community, be an informed citizen, uh, people coming into the community or people who, who are here are going to be, uh, informed about community services, resources, activities. Uh, we're gonna start that out with, off with a community calendar. That's something we've been working on for years as, uh, Roger, uh, can echo. Uh, we actually got approved for that, um, by the board, and so that's actually already underway. Um, and I'll get more information that about, out about that over the next couple of months. Um, library will investigate the use of email updates for library information. This is also community information, which will be easier if we know everybody, what everybody's doing, uh, via the community calendar. Uh, this has come up in, in a number of organizations, which is the new resident kit. Um, like a welcoming community, uh, welcoming committee, uh, everything that, that is going on, you know, make somebody feel a part of the community right from the start. Uh, and then using TikTok, just another social media way to, to, and a fun way to advertise, um, talk about everything that's going on in the community. Um, library helps create a and promote a positive image of the community. Um, we're gonna first start and evaluate, uh, how we've been, uh, participating in the community development group. Um, I think that we've made a lot of good headway, um, but some of our goals may fit in differently with the, the organization than how we are currently, so we just wanna look at that and make sure that we're using our, um, our efforts and our, our resources to the best of our ability. Um, we're gonna change the library website to the blog format, which is also sort of underway. It needs a little tweaking, but, um, it's kind of there already. Again, just another method for bringing in the community information into, to library services. Um, third goal, residents receive information and support on health literacy. Uh, this came from a general feeling that there's, it's getting much more difficult to be, um, accurately informed about health decisions, not just pandemic, but just as a whole, there's just a, a ton of information out there that's, um, skewed. Uh, and, and we wanna host some, some events on, on making that, um, that easier for people in our community. Um, likewise, we want, we wanna discuss mental health, uh, a concern as the pandemic's gone, uh, come through and just continues. It just seems like, um, that's been an issue, you know, nationwide for, for a number of years, so we wanted to focus on that and, uh, provide some discussions or, or some events on that. Uh, building successful enterprises. Um, so the first one, nonprofits and charities will be connected with residents and local businesses interested in their missions and goals. Um, we want people to know about what's available in our community, um, so that they can better tie in with what they're interested in, whether that's helping out, whether that's donating, whether that's receiving services that, um, that somebody provides. Um, so by the end of twenty twenty-four, we're gonna create a website or online database of community nonprofits and charities. Um, this will tie in definitely with the new resident kit, providing some of the, the same information. Um, we're gonna support a wish list of needed items and donations for local nonprofits, which is again, um, trying to connect people and businesses, uh, who we have in town, who are extremely generous, uh, and trying to connect them with what, um, what they need with who provides them. Um, goal two, business owners, uh, having access to the information regarding city codes, available support and community events. Uh, starting off with a welcome packet, sort of like the new welcome kit, uh, a welcome, saying, you know, these are the, the local codes, how you put up a sign, um, the, the utilities that are available, um, how to make the most from the community events that are going on, you know, how do you sell during Hoover's hometown days? How do you sell during, um, Christmas past? Uh, grants that are available through the library, through the C, community development group, um, as, as well as the support offered within, um, both of them. We've got databases, CDG has, uh, training as well, um, but people don't necessarily know about it. We want those businesses to be able to succeed, um, and be strong within our community. Um, similar, uh, to the, the residence, so one, uh, create and maintain a searchable database, um, of community information for business owners. Um, honestly, I think this will be like, um, Wikipedia, except for West Branch, so that's already underway as well. Um, it was something I was toying around with during lunches, so, um, I've actually already got the background for that, so that, that should be an interesting thing. Um, goal three, residents who, who work remotely will find the support and connection to the community. Um, you know, acknowledging that there were more remote workers during the pandemic and many of them may not be going back. Um, there was already remote workers before, and then there's just gonna be more. Um, so we wanna provide technology support, um, for them within the library. This can be like a place to work outside the office, a place to hold meetings, um, maybe a little business center, um, uh, whatever people need to, to, to help work, um, with, uh, with remote work. Um, and then we want them to feel part of the community. Uh, you know, when you're working from your house, you, you only leave to shop or, or do something like that, so we want them to feel connected to the community and have a, 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 a base of, of support through, as well. And then our last set is celebrating diversity. Basically, we wanna bring our people together, learn about each other's cultures, heritage, abilities, age differences, et cetera. Um, first one, we're gonna have access to events and information, celebrating the community's diverse heritage, is that's looking at our, um, basically kinda lurking internally. Um, we're gonna look at a, a subscription to ancestry dot com. Uh, we're going to, uh, host events, highlighting backgrounds and abilities of our community. Uh, for some reason, food always came into the discussion of, of backgrounds and, and culture. Um, and then we're gonna set up a display. Uh, this is gonna try and highlight people who, uh, wanna highlight, uh, to show off their, their history, their, their, um, something about themselves, um, in terms of their, their background. Uh, and then goal two is trying to, to be better about diversity and inclusiveness across the, the many different avenues of that. Uh, we wanna be more supportive of the LGBTQIA, uh, community and, and act as a safe place, uh, but none of us happen to, to be a part of that community, so we, we need some education on that. Uh, we're gonna host more family and youth programming on diverse, on diverse topics, and again, that's a huge variety, uh, heritage, culture, abilities, age differences, et cetera. Um, and then we're gonna include that in the book club, uh, as a way for, for adults to discuss it. And that's what I have. That's the entirety of, uh, our strategic plan. Uh, like I said, I will get, um, a, a print copy to you and, and answer any questions that you might have.
I guess I'd just like to say, I, I love the way that you've, um, to build successful business. You mentioned businesses a lot. to build successful business, you mentioned businesses a lot. I think that's very important in a growing community like we may be growing to help these businesses survive and thrive, I guess. What whatever support the library can give is certainly appreciated.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
All right, Nick, um thank you very much, those are, that's a good list of goals and and.
Yeah, that's a lot. So and goals and objectives, that's great. Thank you very much, Nick.
Okay, um item nine, we first we have um a third reading of ordinance eight seventy five. Uh providing general property taxes levied and collected on certain lots in the meadows, part four A in West Branch. Be paid to a special fund for payments on loans in connection to the West Branch Urban Renewal Area. I need a motion, please. Jerry and Nick. There are none, let's proceed to vote, please.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yes.
Goodweiler, Dean.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Um second reading of ordinance seven eighty six, amending title, many traffic and vehicles, chapter sixty nine. Uh parking regulations, motion please. This pertains to parkside mills.
I have one too.
Go ahead, Jerry.
You know, maybe a silly question, but what determines which side of the street or no parking sign.
Leslie told me today that Cory looked at what side the fire I didn't fire hydrants run and parking is not allowed on that side. I'm meant to the man, if hopefully that's the same side as where all the driveways are.
Yeah. Actually, no, as the blacked out, is the blacked out parts where in the side where they're not gonna do the no parking?
No.
Okay.
So Cory's done some research there to find out where the fire hydrants are, sounds like, and uh the parking on the other side. Which is great.
My question.
What's your question?
Yes. I know it's a private drive, but that's an extra narrow road with a bunch of driveways. And there's no no parking signs on that. Private drive, but you know as well as I do what's gonna happen, they're gonna be coming in here and saying.
We're gonna get complaints.
Yeah.
I thought I thought in the when that was brought to us that he was not gonna allow parking on the either side of the street because it is so narrow.
I guess at the end of the day, it's a private drive, so it's we can't enforce anything on there anyway. So if they come in and complain, we just say.
Yes, go to your association.
Alright. Coming now.
Okay, so that's uh resolution seven eighty six, is is a specifically no parking, right, there's parking regulations. Any other comments? Uh let's vote on ordinance seven eighty six, the second reading.
Councilperson Goodweiler.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Okay, second reading of ordinance seven eighty seven. Amending traffic and vehicles, chapter sixty five, this is stop or yield required, I need a motion. Jerry and Nick. This. Say that again.
Same picture, just as.
Yeah, same picture, stop signs. Um any other, any questions? Go ahead, Les.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Stulman.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
What's eighty nine, uh? First reading of ordinance seven eighty nine. Um amending the traffic and vehicles, chapter sixty nine, parking regulations. This is a different subdivision.
This is from Dawson.
Yeah. So seven eighty nine is is the uh Meadows Meadows and Cedar's Edge. No parking where it's indicated. I agree with all this, I I think up Greenview Drive that connects the new connection. You may wanna consider no parking on one side of that street. I don't know where.
Was gonna be mailboxes on the
No, they're down.
The the lower right hand corner of that intersection, Greenview, so. So Greenview Park, Prairie, Prairie View, Greenview Prairie View.
On the west side or the east side?
I don't know, I I don't have a little flower yield, so what's more, so it's gonna be on the lower right hand corner is where.
The mailboxes are by the.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Um I'm fine with it this time, I may bring that up to Cory for next time to to get no parking on one side of that.
On one side or the other, cuz they're parking too wide now and you can hardly get a semi through there.
Yeah. You're right, so I'll uh Cory, we'll note that next time for the third reading, we may get that included. Okay, uh let's go ahead and vote on this uh second reading then. Wait, this is first reading. All right. Once again, first reading of ordinance seven eighty nine, amending traffic and vehicles, chapter sixty nine, parking regulations, this pertains to the Meadows Lothian Ridge and Cedar's Edge. Any other questions, comments? There are none, let's vote, please.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Dean.
Yes.
Item E, we have a public hearing for the public inspection of the proposed code of ordinances of the city of West Branch, Iowa. Is anyone here that would like to speak? Is this a public hearing or not?
Yeah.
Yes.
You guys wanna say something? But you can if you want. Um about our codification and recodification. Um hearing no comments. Um I will close the public hearing. And move into the first reading of ordinance seven eighty eight. Adopting the code of ordinance uh ordinances of the city of West Branch. How much questions?
I have one comment.
Go ahead.
The we received the code link today, um Nick got it on the website. Um earlier, I checked both quick links, it wasn't working on the quick links, but if you go to the actual ordinance page, it where it says code of ordinances, it will take you to Iowa codifications website where our code is housed. And just click on the link on the left hand side and it pops up and it's by chapter, so.
Where will it be found initially then?
Um I'll have Nick correct the link um this morning, but or this afternoon or tomorrow, um but it'll be on the left hand side where it says quickly, it says code of ordinances. That's on on the homepage right there, otherwise you can go into the ordinance page itself, it is out there now.
Okay, let's vote on the first reading of adopting the.
Alright, councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Dean.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Resolution twenty sixty one, approving annual insurance renewals with Walmart, Blue Cross and Blue Shield for health and dental insurance, motion please. Nick.
One second.
Second, Tom. Yeah. Comes up, it goes down.
I'd go up next year too. We gotta pay for all them free vaccine, back vaccines. Pay for the energy there in ICUs.
That's more expensive.
Hundred thousand dollars. One week's day.
So. Okay. Uh go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Dean.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Resolution twenty sixty true two, approving the site plan for Dawson Plaza, lots one, two and three of the Meadows, part four A, in motion please.
Second.
Jerry and Tom. Um this passed through P and Z yet unanimously, I believe, a week ago or so. Um they found all the parkings, they found the parking spots. Seems like a good fit, so.
Roger, there there are two conditions on this that I think we need to consider.
Oh, yeah, Dave.
One is sidewalk on Main Street, since that doesn't go anywhere currently, uh we would need to have something in the agreement to indicate that they would put that in at such point that there was a connection on Main Street. And then they also need to acquire a fill-in floodplain permit.
I thought, I didn't know this was in a floodplain.
Yeah.
A little corner of it.
I believe that's correct, is just that that corner, so we need to make sure that that's covered if we're going to do that.
I think Ryan, the engineer, got the certification from the D N R that we needed, so. I don't know, we need to get that today, or what exactly.
Um let's, so we, this can be approved, probably contingent upon that. One thing, I would
Yeah.
Make it a contingency.
Yeah, cuz we have to. You have the D N, we have to issue a floodplain permit ourselves. That's for the U S D F.
Well, no, there's an action guy on.
James, James, can you hear us?
I can, uh hey, it's James Kincaid from Maxx, I'm filling in for for Brian Belt tonight, uh I can't speak on whether or not he got anything from the D N R today, but I can, I'll definitely bring it up to them, I'm sure he's on top of it.
Okay, so um we can make that a contingency, who made the motion? Okay, as far as the sidewalk goes, um how how would that be, uh it it some sort of a agreement that would gets buried for, what if the property gets sold?
Okay.
Or do we take cash?
Did this at McDonald's when we were doing that project, so you can you can do it one of two ways, you can put an agreement that says once we give the property owner notice, you have ninety days or some hundred eighty days. Or you can write us a check. And then i- if it costs more, that's our problem. But we took from it, we did take cash from McDonald's when we did that. We did.
Yeah.
We got a bunch of Big Macs.
Yeah.
It's always a losing deal though, because
By time we put.
Yeah, because we they're gonna pay us for a sidewalk, that at the end of the day, probably is never gonna be put in, or at least not for years and years and years, because there's ditches there, and then you're gonna have to put storm sewer in, you have to do all this thing to make a sidewalk work. And at the end of the day, you probably ain't gonna have it, you'd almost be better off to start like a trail fund or something like that. And then just have them give us some money for what it would cost to have a sidewalk.
Yeah, five foot sidewalk.
Put it in a trail fund and spend it somewhere else, and then when it comes time where we get to the point where we can do this, it's all on us to do it. But does that make sense what I'm saying, cuz it ain't ever, it ain't ever gonna get done, we've taken money for other stuff that's sitting there and we can't spend it, we're not, we're not ever gonna do what we what we charged the guy to do. And it's just gonna sit there.
Okay, so um how do we come up with that price? Um I don't know what, five bucks a square foot?
He would have a, Dave should have.
Dave and Brian worked that out. Before this gets ordered or um.
Time to prove.
We can approve it.
We can approve it.
Yeah. Okay, those two things, that's pretty simple. All right, thank you, Dave. Okay, go ahead.
Just wanna speak on behalf of the Meadows and K L M on the part four, lots one and two and three, getting the the this approved, site plan approved. Also wanted to let Scott talk, he didn't get a chance to talk to you guys about this project, he's the one that spearheaded this project. So he's got a a great plan and, you know, of the three or of the top five uh requests that the city wishes on the uh West Branch uh library report. Three of the top five, uh we are trying to cover in this part four. Uh phase in the Meadows, new businesses, obviously, the new housing is already coming and then recreation options, so. Let me talk about things that we want done in the city, we're trying to do this all in this phase here, so I'll let Scott speak on uh his project and which is gonna be the the anchor of this, these three lots, so.
Yep, so my name is Scott To mine, from Progressive Rehabilitation Associates. Uh we, our business is based mainly out of the Iowa City area. We do physical therapy, occupational therapy and speech therapy. Um personally, I've worked with Tom for more years than what probably we both want to admit now, at at this point. Um I personally uh am the athletic trainer for the high school, for the junior high and high school here in town. Uh and we also have the strength and conditioning contract with uh the high school. As of this year, and talking with members of the school community as part of the kind of remodel of the school, uh there was not a whole lot of plans for any uh fitness and wellness uh as part of the remodel of the school, and that was one of the needs that I know the P E teachers uh had. Uh and Melissa, Russell and I from the Parks and Rec Department and Mayor Laufman have also had a couple of common uh conversations about how we can also benefit uh the Parks and Rec Department with this endeavor as well. Um our plan is to have a a small physical therapy business uh in town here as well. Uh but the major portion of the entity would be a fitness center that we're very excited about uh for the community. Uh we're in conversations, like I said, with the school about providing uh some fitness P E opportunities. There currently, there are no cardiovascular equipment at high school or at the middle school, and it won't be uh as part of the renovations, obviously, the athletes uh are getting training right now, but that leaves a huge portion of the school community as well as the general community of West Branch, not having any uh fitness opportunities in town without the need to leave town for that, so uh we are excited about this opportunity, uh I know it was discussed previously that we originally had plans for excuse me, a second story in the building. excuse me, a second story in the building with the addition of a walking track, which we would have loved for the community. Um, but at the price tag that it brought, we, uh, just didn't feel that it was the most beneficial, uh, in portion of that, uh, in that building, so. Uh, there will be plans for cardiovascular equipment, uh, strength training equipment of all different kinds. Uh, we will have a couple of different larger gathering spaces, both for fitness activities and non-fitness activities. Uh, as per discussions with Melissa, uh, and Mayor Loughlin on different things that we felt like would be beneficial for the community, so. We're also in conversations with, uh, some other groups that provide more specialized kind of prospect type training uh, that are members of the community that, that may have an interest in, in doing, uh, some combination of things, uh, for the facility, but all in all, we're we're, we're very excited about the opportunity to bring this, uh, to West Branch, and I, I personally, as a resident of West Branch and being part of the community and, uh, and, and the high school feel that this will be great for not only the students, uh, but also their parents and other members of the community, so. I appreciate you guys' opportunity and, uh, look forward to working together.
Okay, so specifically before, it says the approval of the site plan. There's still a couple other agreements out there that need to be talked about. Right now, it's. Right now, it's site, any other, any questions, comments on site? Let's vote, Leslie, we have.
What kind of lighting is going to be up in the parking lot, would it be something that would be intrusive to homes right around it?
James, you wanna talk on that, otherwise I can kind of speak on that on behalf of Brian.
Yeah, Colton, they did submit a photometric study, um, made sure that we don't have any light trespass outside of the property lines. So that was, uh, part of the site plan, as far as the specific light fixtures, um, I, I don't have that in front of me. I'll have to look to see if that's called out on the site plan.
They told us that, that they minimal impact on neighboring property. Brian, this way. Put their bright C and Z, add a, um, the building plan, have lights on the building, yeah, they're, they're right. Okay, any other comments? Let's go ahead and vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Good Wyler.
Yeah.
Okay. Item I, resolution two hundred twenty sixty-three, approve the annual agreement. In the amount of eighty-six hundred and forty dollars. With USGS for the ongoing operation and maintenance of the stream flow gauging on the Wapsipin Onak Creek at the College Street Bridge. Motion please. Second by Nick. Okay. Don't know why, but this.
We've got John from USGS, since he's out of mind as well, if he's got a comment or two, we should.
Um, I'm gonna recognize John, Nanya. Um, you wanna go ahead and speak to this?
Yeah, sure, Mary, yeah, so, uh, this is the, uh, I think the, probably the sixth uh, year, the sixth or seventh agreement that we've had with this stream gauge in College Street. So what this provides is that continuous record of stream flow and water level throughout the year. And, uh, it's important for a lot, many reasons, but I think, uh, maybe the most beneficial to the city could be any, uh, modeling that could be done on the watershed, uh, so the more, um, ground truth, real data that we have um, or any other engineer would have to use that data for a model, uh, would, would produce, um, a model with better confidence on things like, um, alterations in the stream, uh, watershed, we've done that model a couple of years ago that Charlie Segren did, um, in the watershed and uh, if, uh, there's discussions to improve that model or update that model on any alterations that have taken place or any other new ideas for alterations to, to minimize flood impacts, then this string gauge would certainly be, um, really beneficial, of course, to those models, so it's uh, there's really no way to, to, to prove the model if there isn't the ground truth data. Uh, so having this real time, this continuous record of stream flow data for the six plus years, seven years going forward um, would be, uh, it would be, um, it just, um, creates a, just a more, a model with less uncertainty, so. Um, but there's a lot of other, uh, benefits, if there's ever any water quality data that's gonna be collected, uh, we could do some backcasting to see possibly what occurred and forecast water quality, uh, and stream flow information is useful for that too. Just beyond knowing what's going on there right now and setting up alerts. If you're not in the area to know what's going on with the watershed, the creek, we can set up alerts for, for folks to get texts or emails when the stream is rising at a certain rate, those sorts of things, so. But, and as far as the city goes, and I think just from the discussions we've had with, with you all for the last, uh, five, six, seven years, it's, it's the modeling effort that really really comes into play with the string gauge in College, on College Street. And then, um, one other thing, once we get to ten years of record, if we, if we make it that far, if the council keeps approving it, then we can really start to hone in on some some, uh, more at site, using the data at the sites to compute things like the hundred year flood without using, um, estimates that are taken into account sites outside of the area, that sort of thing. So, uh, the price has been consistent since we've, on the city side, uh, the price has been the same since we started. Um, we try to keep those, uh, as low as possible, even though it may seem that way, the USGS contributes another fifty some hundred dollars to that effort as well for the ongoing O and M as well, so. And that's something that we actually don't do anymore, um, we grandfathered West Branch in, so as long as we're continuing this operation, we'll, we'll pay that, um, that fifty-seven hundred or so that we're contributing every year ourselves, so. Uh, but if there's other questions regarding the stream gauge, I'm happy to answer.
Sorry.
You go ahead.
Do we get, um, data, I mean, do we get a report?
Well, um, y- you can, uh, you can, it's available to the world, it's publicly available, um, it's, um, uh, there's a, there's a webpage dedicated towards the real time data, the historic data. Um, the annual peaks, there's a lot of, a lot of data that are available at the site, but it's, it's publicly available. Um, we, we look at it every day ourselves, the same thing that, that you all or anyone else would be looking at. And, um, um, if there's a malfunction or something looks a little odd, we'll send our crews out from Iowa City right away to fix it. Uh, we go out every six weeks, no matter what, we're at that bridge, no matter what, every six weeks, just to make sure everything is working properly. And, uh, we'll go out on special occasions to calibrate our, our calculations during higher flows or, or lower flows, that sort of thing. But yeah, the, the data are available to you, to anyone else that may use it, uh, Dave or other engineers, uh, you know, it doesn't, people can download it whenever they want and use it uh, themselves, so, um. Yeah, so it is available to you, we could create a report for you if you just wanna ask us and we can get you something, but, um. Otherwise, it's available to anyone to, all the historic data since we've started that, that site in, in twenty fifteen, so.
Uh, my question is or was, I, why not a fifty fifty split on the cost?
Yeah, so, um, we ha- we haven't been able to unfortunately do a fifty fifty cost split on any work we've done, I, I've been working here twenty-five plus years, it's, maybe it's been like twenty years since we've been able to do that. And, and like I said, we West, we've grandfathered West Branch in on those funds because, uh, we have this pot of money that we're allowed every year. They're called cooperative matching funds that are appropriated from US Congress that we can use to, to help offset cost to partners. And that, that, that pool has shrunk on us too, so. That's why if we were to start this up again, that those funds would probably, it would get scooped up right away by some other projects that, just that forty percent that we pay now of the, of the gauge. And, uh, so unfortunately, we don't have any more funds to, to bump it up to fifty fifty, so. Yeah, yeah, it's been a long time since we've been able to do that unfortunately.
Okay, any other comments, I guess we have, I get a motion?
Yes.
Dean.
I, I have a comment, uh, question actually for the council, um, at what point do we, in this, in this, uh, yeah.
Data.
Keep wondering that too.
I have an answer for you.
I kinda do too, but you go.
To me, the answer would be, is when you no longer have any intentions of improving the flood situation on that creek, then it might as well come out, cuz you're just wasting money.
I feel as if we're, we're still battling flood issues and we, we will, even after we do the downstream widening, we still need some sort of record of what's happening.
Well, not only that, but if, if the idea is to finally, is to put a retention structure upstream there, which is gonna do us the most amount of good, then, you know, the more, longer we keep that in there, the the better, more data we're gonna have in the, you know.
Pete's work, we take this out. You don't even know if.
Anything until we knew our.
Oh, I know, but it's just, you still, you never know, we also thought that we did before with the bridge.
I mean, I guess that's the way I look at it, I understand it's a, it's a lot of money, it seems like we're not really getting anything out of it. You know, but as, as long as we're getting information that we can do something with, un- unless we're gonna sit here and say we ain't ever gonna do anything about it, you know, buy a raft, get you some wings, do whatever you gotta do, if it gets larges too high, just learn how to swim, you know, th- then we can say, get rid of the reader, but, you know.
I, I, I'm not against it at all, I, I don't want that to be construed at all, I'm just, but to me, we really don't get the benefit of this until we get the flood. So, we're, we're, we're gonna be paying for this, say, maybe we don't get flooded in five years, we're paying for data that we already have. And until we get a flood, or like you say, until we put a retention up north, that slows this water down during a flood. We could be paying this for ten years before we get enough data to really.
We could cancel it and get six floods in three months.
That was my question last year was, so if we, if we stop it now, but when we do widen the creek or whatever, well, this price is gonna double to put it back in.
Right. Yeah, I'll tell you, John, that, that's keeping us alive on this stream gauge right now, cuz it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't mean to word it like, you know, keep it or else we're gonna, you know, increase the cost, but it, it is the reality of it and, uh, and then reinstallation costs on top of it, so, um, it could be. Yeah, it's certainly your call, it's a good question to ask, it's how, how long do you need to continue to fund it, that's a good question to ask, I would be asking the same question too.
Wasn't one of the reasons last year, um, that Cedar Valley flood thing that we applied.
Lower Cedar River watershed, management authority, we are a part of.
And we applied for that grant and part of that was, we had to stay in the.
We didn't have to, but it helped, that, that we're doing this helps us. It may help us potentially get grant money down the road for upstream retention. It may help us, so.
I guess I. Mayor, I would, I would say that this has already had some success, we received over seven hundred thousand in sponsored project funds because of the thoroughness of the application we put together, that gauge provides some of the information they need. And going forward, and we look at the Wetland Reserve Enhancement Partnership, the Homeland, Homeland Security folks have told us the same thing, USDA and RCS um, on and on have all indicated that the better information we have, the more thorough application we can put together, and the better we can demonstrate the success. The more likely we are to obtain funds going forward.
You don't get to vote anymore.
Of course, the council could easily turn over the next, yeah, we know, but. We need to keep it going.
I just thought it'd be cool to have a report for the last six years of how much rain we've gotten, how much it's
We could ask.
risen and how much it's lowered and, I don't know how to pull that data together, but somebody probably does.
And we could do a presentation if you wanted the data, we've done that for some of our partners, you know, it's.
Someday when we have a slow meeting, we may ask you to come in and, uh.
Sounds good, guys.
Store meeting. So, be ready. Okay, um, thank you, John, so we got a motion to approve. Is there any other discussion?
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Good Wyler.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
All right, it's live for another year.
Thank you, John.
Less painful this year. Didn't take two meetings.
Okay, what's next here, we got, uh, fireworks. Here we go. Looks like the cost is going up for fireworks. Are they wanting us, is this, this is a contract proposal, right? That's just too close. To discuss. All right.
Leslie's got something.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I requested the fireworks contract, cuz, um, the Hupersom Town Days Committee decided that fireworks is something they wanna do, and we're gonna do it at Cubby Park again. So I reached out to J and M Displays and, um, I said, go ahead and write up the contract and send it to me. And he wrote back and said, I can write you the twenty-five thousand dollars, but, um, it will shorten your display, cuz there's a twenty-five percent increase this year. So the thirty-one two fifty is, with the twenty-five percent increase in the same show. The twenty-five thousand dollar one is a shortened show, so if we wanna use our budget the same for twenty-five thousand dollars, keep our budget the same, then it'll be a shortened show. If you want the same show, we have to pay a little bit more.
So. Shortened show.
How much shorter?
Short.
Well, I thought the original show was.
Eighteen minutes, seventeen?
I thought it was fifteen minutes, but I'm never here, so I don't really know, I don't ever. So I always thought it was. So, and I didn't see that, he didn't indicate what the, the number was.
Twelve three beer.
Twelve to fifteen.
Yeah.
For the short.
Yeah.
Doesn't say for the other one.
Yeah, it doesn't say for the other one. But you can tell by just the list, I mean, there's a quite, there's quite a bit more on the list. Um, I was having some printing issues. The total count for the, um, the twenty-five thousand dollars is ninety-six shells. And for the, the, with the increase is a hundred and ninety-six shells. So maybe almost longer, so is it thirty minutes and that almost make it thirty minutes? A hundred shells more.
Yeah, but that, that could just be a couple of them big. Those are the cool ones.
And from the, I think there's gonna be some changes, um, there might be some savings in the budget, um, Melissa Melissa will chime in on some of the changes that they made, so there might be some cost savings that we could.
Uh, go ahead, Melissa, what have you to say?
Well, the committee, we kinda talked about it and we think, unless council disagrees with us, that we should not have the um, brass band at Cubby Park, and that was about thirty-five hundred, and then if we remove that and the stage then for the brass band, that puts it up about forty-five hundred, so it would balance out and still keep our costs about the same. So those are some of the big changes, we are seeing across the board, a little bit of. So those are some of the big changes. We are seeing across the board a little bit of increases in as expected in our prices. So this wasn't unexpected. We spend about. We budget about sixty-four thousand dollars a year total from city funds for the event. That includes the fireworks and then we fundraised for about twenty-five thousand, so. We're we're still trying to keep the cost the same. So I I guess bottom line is if you went with the fireworks, we would still find someplace else to cut that and not ask for more monies.
So the reason that's banned and staged was discussed to be eliminated was there was very few people there this last summer to.
That is correct.
Observe the ban. Very few, so. Take that out.
So I'm just looking for direction to let them know which contractor we want. They'll, um, they actually sent me all the paperwork and then I would bring it back as a resolution next week. So our next meeting, so just need to let me know which one.
We go with the, take the increase and eliminate the ban.
I would say this is as far as what the the city contributes to Hoover Days. You know, as far as what we fund, this is the biggest thing we fund and that seems to matter to people.
I guess my question was gonna be. He's stuck with twenty-five, with the forty-five hundred dollars from the ban, something else? That's my only question.
General rolling increase of. So maybe we do need to save the ban.
We didn't have any inflatable.
There will be, there may be that.
Where'd all that money go?
So I have something about the inflatables too. I guess I could just give a quick little update. Um, Beck, Becky's working on a contract. With a different inflatable co- company. It'll be about twelve thousand for the inflatables. And then the other contract that we have in the works for next time will probably be the um, it's the About Faces Company. They did the magician, the caricature, and then the balloon artist. Um, that was a slight increase also. Last year we paid eighteen thousand. This year it's twenty-two thousand, so.
Also, last summer, we did not do. Three or four big stage bands. We did some little street corner, which I think was pretty popular. I would lobby for that again.
That was something the committee also really agreed on. Um, we also last year absorbed the costs of the bands at the fire department and we fundraised for those. Um, and then they didn't charge admission. So that last year, that was something that we added in the event costs and we plan to do that the same this year.
Capture the inflation or do we? I didn't know.
Well, not bigger fireworks, the same.
Yeah. I'd like to go that way. Same fireworks, little more money.
This is being brought up before we go through our budget and and.
What's hard is that's in between two budgets, so and then you've gotta. Gotta also.
Everything's going up, so. Stuff for hometown agents, the whole city, everything on the city's going up.
Fire departments think about not having a supper on Saturday night. They were down like three hundred meals this year. That's always so. We were down like five hundred.
Well, I don't try and ask these questions, Leslie, in a public meeting, just because I like to give you a heads up, but I was thinking about it on the way back from the the appointment. Does it matter? For the company if we, do we have to pick one or the other now, or does deposit matter? I guess what I'm saying is that say we fundraise, we normally fundraise twenty, but let's say we get, we do an extra push for twenty-five. If we get twenty-five, would we be able to do the normal display? And if we only get twenty, we only, I guess. How how far in advance is J and M, I guess, need our deposit? And does it matter?
Adam, we jack with these guys almost every year, so. It's never.
Probably split this and pay half in one year and a half and not.
Deposit is due by June thirtieth, so somewhere in between March and June. The deposit would get paid and usually as five thousand and then the balance would be paid after Hoover's hometown days. We'd write the check and they would mail it after that, after the after the event. So yeah, we're talking two fiscal years, five thousand in FY twenty-two and the other money in FY twenty-three. And fundraising, um, this year I didn't expect to get as much as I did. Um, I was expecting a lower year because of what was going on and I did make like, I think I got like eighteen and a half, eighteen thousand five hundred. Um, but the highest has been like twenty-three, so every year's different. We don't know. And we actually had a couple of big donors that didn't even donate, so you know, I'm not sure this time it just happened around and you know, we've got. Yeah, two banks didn't even donate, so. Yeah, they were always at least. So, you know, I just keep, I just keep getting more and more creative and trying to find other avenues, but. Like I said, people, I think people wanted the events, liked it. They like to sponsor things or like they like to see their names on stuff, so I give them sponsorships. Seems to be working. It's never a guarantee.
Do you have any idea from J and M when they, when their deadline would be, whether we do? The increased, the same amount as we've been doing, or they have to shorten it down?
I don't think it matters on how much we spend. They just wanna pencil us in and get us on their calendar, so. In 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 years past, it was always done in December. Um, last year, I think we didn't do it till like January, February. It just kind of dragged out a little bit, so each. You know, each year's been a little bit different, but I think they just wanna know a commitment from us and then, you know, we just need to decide what our budget is.
I think you could tell them, safe to tell, we could, we're gonna do one or the other.
I'd like to get that contract in front of us and be done with it.
I think the contract has to come after we decide on our budget, whether we're doing the. Our budget might say we only gonna get twenty of this and the rest has to be raised.
Yeah, okay.
And you can look at the Hoover Sometown Days budget too, to see if there's any areas there that you wanna see increased or decreased and that'll help maybe a little bit too. And I know.
Yeah, we did see that last year before at a meeting.
I know, so it's still kind of early. I'm sure everyone's trying to get their contracts, but you know, some people might have an idea what they're planning on and maybe there's areas there.
And maybe that's something that we sit down in the committee that's working on it, gives us something to look at.
I can go ahead and um send that out to you. I mean, we talked about the last hometown days meeting.
A preliminary.
Budget, yeah, the last two hometown days meetings, so. That's. I can send it out to you.
Yeah, you should. That'd be great. Thank you. Okay.
I did actually put um this year.
Kiosk with donations except. You mean the night of or the day of or somewhere out here all day? During the whole weekend. Okay, I see.
I did put a note on our water bills to donate to Hoover's Hometown Day so they could go to the website and go to our link and. It's how it's gonna be. Mechanism for me to try to get some more, you know, five dollars, ten dollars. I mean, any mo- any amount would have been fine. I even had something on the front counter and.
That's a good, that's a good idea, Nick. No. Some sort of display, cut out, a plywood cutout or something. We could do that.
Hometown Days is not just for our community. It's area communities that come to our.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm saying. You put out a donation box, somebody from West Liberty or Muscatine or wherever coming up here, Iowa City might actually go. Here's my pocket change is better than. We may try to actually advertise this this summer. We didn't advertise at all last year. And we haven't seriously in the past, so.
I mentioned that a couple of years ago, but that was for the inflatables that I was talking about. But um. We can do that as long as it's not on park property.
Yeah.
This is what I understood.
Can't beg for money on federal property. Corin Iowa City's okay. All right, let's move on. Um, strategic goals and priorities.
So normally each December, I'll try and do a, I guess, a year goal. Bunch of goals and and strategies here. I just included. Some of them that weren't done last year. I included a little bit of things that we've talked about. I guess I'm just looking for comments, but I did add um Streets Capital Improvement Plan, um, as I mentioned in my. City Administrator Report. Councils are pretty strong on the infrastructure street side, so we gotta be a little bit more disciplined in how we decide how to use our streets budget. Um, I did kick Matt's budget back um to shorten it up. We'll still have more to talk about. Um, but it's kind of why I want a capital improvement plan, so we know what projects we're doing each year. And if we ever decide to change a project, we gotta eliminate a project before we, before we do anything else going forward. So that's something you guys haven't um talked about that I put in there. Same with local option, sales tax, referendum, marketing campaign, that's gonna come up in two years. And so we'll need to be thinking a year to two, two years out, so the end of this year. Um, we'll wanna kind of show where our lost money has gone to, because it's gonna be a referendum vote in twenty twenty-four. Yep, so things like that.
Pickleball as we.
Mentioned some of the reserve requirement policies and TIF policy procedures are in there too, because that's kind of been popping up, but. Um, I haven't been here the last, you know, however long with this council, so I don't know if there's anything you wanna add. I did shorten it up to. Here's what we can do in the next year. Here's what we possibly can do in the next two to five years. If an opportunity presents itself. We'll prioritize those in section two, but for the most part, in the next twelve months, we'll be hitting one through eight.
Where does uh Eastside Water Project come in?
It is in the completed capital improvement plan that prioritizes. So number one, Cedar Johnson Roundabout and Eastside Water.
We did that this year. Didn't we do that before Raymond left?
Now it's just burning your brain. This is it right here. I mean, I like it short and sweet.
And they double up on.
Yeah. The problem is.
Categories and twelve overall, eight categories.
Developer comes to town and wants something that.
That's our. We've got some developers that are coming to town asking for this and that.
That's right.
It's not on our radar.
I don't know how to handle that.
That number six takes care of all that.
Except for the, where the money comes from, except for actually.
Except that our, our, we could create an implementative policy that's no, 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 no. And that takes care of it, right?
So.
It could take care of it in a hurry. Could take care of our growth.
Okay, uh, this is great, Adam. What's next though with this? What's the next thing to do?
So in January, we'll adopt it. Normally, I'd like that to be the first resolution we adopt every year. Is what our plans are for the next year.
What does it cost to put a a full-time employee?
That's a good question. Um. It's obviously hard.
All the benefits and everything.
If you're paying someone, yeah, forty a year, then it's probably another twenty in benefit, so anywhere between sixteen eighty. And number four is probably more in the five year from now, to be honest with you. But. I know it's been talked about adding another police officer and things like that, so that's, I just put it in a broad. Term, so we weren't pigeonholing us just for one type of.
So about twenty thousand from whatever salary.
Maybe even a little.
It's gonna be necessary something. All right, um, what's next? I guess we're done with that topic. City Administrator Report, I'm Paul, Adam.
Uh, tomorrow is our first staff potluck. Council's invited. If there are more than three, just keep in mind, don't talk government business, but um, that's really hard to do, but try your best. So it'll be eleven at here tomorrow. And then I did put out some postings, but if you guys have anyone in mind, we need one park and rec board member. And two board of adjustment members. So if there's anyone you know that is interested, per state law, preferably female for park and rec. Um, for the gender balance. Requirement by the state. So just that there's anybody you know that's interested in general, um, obviously mayor interviews and confirms those appointments, but. Anything that'll help Roger or myself, so. And then I was hoping Greg would be here so I could kind of explain the budget, but I'll I'll repeat this again next meeting too. Um, you guys have read my city administrator reports in terms of the budget, but. Just to kind of reiterate, on the revenue side. We're seeing some changes in the rollback factor and how. Properties are, there's assessed values versus taxable value, so. Just if your property is valued at a hundred thousand, currently only fifty-six percent or fifty-six thousand is taxed. Is taxable value. That number is moving down for single-family residents from fifty-six to fifty-four percent this year. I'm not sure. I haven't gotten our levy yet, so I'm not sure if that will. Increase, if it will keep us the same, or if it'll decrease. My guess is it'll probably keep us the same.
You know, revenue, that'll.
Correct, so general fund, property tax.
So that slightly increase in the rollback would affect.
It's gonna affect us.
It affects.
Correct. Yes.
The value of the property goes up to compensate.
That's the only thing I would say.
Yeah, pretty much. So.
In the last couple of years.
Think it would.
Which.
Last couple of years, it's gone up. That should level up. That's that's one factor. Year two factor is multifamily is going down to the single-family rate. I can't remember what those percentages are. And then over the next eight years, we are seeing a sliding scale reduction. And what's called. And what's called. Backfill.
Backfill.
We currently receive ninety thousand a year in backfill. In eight years, that'll be zero. So.
Because of the ten percent de-tyre increase in the commercial.
Yes, in twenty thirteen, there is a bill that was passed.
Apartments being made resident.
That the state was going to lower property, the property tax rate. In that, that affected cities and counties more than it actually affected the state. And so they promised. Promise that they would always fill that. Well. As much of a I A M as a big proponent in mental health, the, the new mental health bill that Governor Reynolds in the state legislature. Supported and signed is eliminating that backfill. That's how they're paying for the mental health bill.
Along with some water.
Correct. Correct. There's a couple of other things in there. So on the revenue side, we very well could be even. A very small increase or decrease. I don't know yet at this point. Um for safety reasons, it's probably neutral at this point. And then on the other side, expenses, inflation's up by six percent. Um fire department, we're going to need help. Um we're just not having people. Make calls like we used to, so we can't not support the fire department. If they have to increase on-call, paid-on-call time. So that's going to hit us. And then if we want to have a good set aside policy. And a, you know, stronger reserve. Policies or just have a consistent one, those, that's going to increase expenses one way or another, so. I don't know what that means at this point, um but I would anticipate, you know, in the next ten to fourteen days, some tough decisions are probably going to happen. And that's kind of my note to the, to the public. It's not done by intention. For better or for worse, um and this is not my, how I wanted to phrase these things. I obviously wanted to meet our state legislators first before kind of making a public comment, but. There are times when they want to fund a program and they fund it by cutting from cities and counties. So the mental health bill. Point case, um we got our hands full this budget, so. Just kind of be prepared and think over while you guys ran for council, and that's why I ask you those individual questions to kind of help. If tough decisions come, hopefully I can act on your behalf. When I give you a budget.
So save sixty-five hundred dollars right off of that.
I think we should cut our contributions to the state. Help pay for our stuff here.
And they have, we, we don't pay anything.
Our residents pay their state taxes, we'll just.
On the residents' behalf, we'll pay your taxes for you.
So then what happens? Property taxes go up to pay for what the state did.
They get it one way or the other.
Alright, okay, Adam.
I've got nothing.
Dave Scheckinger, how about a, anything on the roundabout in? Check and you're still here?
I'm still here.
What else, what else?
So, uh, we'll, we'll start with the roundabout. Uh received the letter today or an email today from the county, and I copied you on that, Roger. We'll have to talk through that. And Kevin, you received a copy as well. We just need to review that nineteen seventy-seven agreement, I believe it is, that Neil forwarded. And determine whether or not that's going to impact uh what the city's portion of this project is and what the county's portion is. That has to do with the uh twenty-eighty agreement that um indicated the city was from that point forward responsible for maintenance and reconstruction. Of Cedar Johnson Road.
What I read said maintenance.
Uh there's a reconstruction in there as well, Colton. I read it a few times just to be sure, and I want Kevin to look it over to see if that's something that can bind to this council. Or if it's um maybe uh worded such that it was referring to at that point in time, so. We'll look into that and come back with a recommendation, and if we need to work through that with the county attorney, I'll let Kevin uh put on the gloves and see where that ends up.
Again, remember this was forced on us. This was not our idea.
Hoover Highway Improvement?
Yeah.
So they, they can stop at the intersection, reconstruct it as is, or they can do a portion of the reconstruction that we desire. And they would pay for a ma- a majority of that on their side of the county line. And that was the offer that was provided to us.
Well, they'd have to put a turn lane in on their side. They've already done the survey, so they'd have to put the turn lane in.
Went through that already.
I know we went through it, but.
Minimally.
Now they're one, now they're hitting us with maintenance and. If something break curb or concrete breaks, we gotta replace it and.
So we, we just need to work through that language a little bit and see what that contract means with respect to the current project, and that, that came today, so. Haven't had a chance to review it, but I wanted to make sure that you're aware that we are working on that portion of it. And that will have some impact on the county's portion of the twenty-eighty review and approval. So that's, uh they believe that was part of their diligence and looking through that um that agreement that we had put together. Uh switching gears, uh Wopsey Creek widening, again, we're working with the sponsored project program to try to defray the cost of that project. And combine that with some parks money to fund it. Uh we did receive a proposal from Impact Seven G. We haven't received official word yet from D N R. I'll continue to look into that, but uh once we get the word to proceed with that. Uh we have an agreement that Adam has in front of him as well. We'll review that together and provide any comments back to Impact Seven G, so we're ready to go once we get approval. The wastewater plant project, we're continuing to work through some uh minor changes on that. We had some equipment um issues. Where one of the equipment manufacturers for U V. Um had a split up of the company and left us a little bit uncomfortable with proceeding with that product, so we have been redesigning around another product. Based on a decision from Matt. And we're also uh looking to try to get review plans to him early next year. And have uh a bid set uh sometime late winter, um February timeframe, February, March, right in that range. Uh the I eighty water main project, this is the one that is on the west side of Baker. That one is closed out for the most part. We just have a few things that we need to do in order to receive the final reimbursement from the D O T. And then the one on the other side under the bridge, uh that one on Gasco's property. Uh D O T has asked us to facilitate relocation of the Liant gas line uh that crosses the interstate. In that location, so we've been working with Liant to coordinate with our water main relocation and the culvert that goes in. To make sure they have everything done properly. We should have that resolved here shortly and should be able to put that project out for bid. Uh we've been reviewing a number of residential lot site plans uh throughout town. And have been discussing the possibility of implementing a grade check for final grading before they put sod down to make sure that the grading is. In accordance with the site plan. And Adam and I will continue to work out that language and um bring that before council for final approval. We also have um been talking quite a bit with Spare Financial on the water system and C I P projects and working through. Some of the details for funding options on that, and once we get through the goal setting and uh have things prioritized, we should be able to work with Maggie. To provide a good picture of how we pay for those items. So that's what I have for tonight. Um we'll continue to work on some of these other issues, but. Anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I, I got a question, not a question, just a. This whole grading. Post, post-building grading thing. We've been, I've been down this road already one other time. It got ugly fast. Because. I think what we had came up to determination was is that we wanted each home to have its own site plan. So if you build a home, you had to submit a site plan. The builders went up in arms because that was going to have them have to. Have an engineer do a bunch of stuff, and they came in here and started throwing chairs and all kinds of stuff started happening. And then before you knew it, I don't know what we agreed on, but it must not be working.
Um we do require. We got, we got one house on east. Sounds awesome, that's.
He's referring to Dawson, uh Dave, two eleven Dawson, that I've had those conversations with and. Matt, Matt and I have been out there once or twice, so.
There's some pooling in their backyard. They're not, owners aren't happy about it. Well, it's because, probably because the builder. Builder didn't grade it properly.
So the site plan does show that it'll drain. The issue that we have is even though they have a site plan, there isn't any check to confirm that they graded it according to the site plan. Before they put sod down, and that appears to be the case here, is that they didn't follow the grading plan. So the homeowner and I was looking to the city to try to figure out how to go about resolving this. And since we don't have a check before they put this on down, we're discussing whether or not that needs to take place and uh how that would be accommodated.
Well, my parents got told that when the two lots behind them took out the berm. And now they're getting, my folks' place is getting flooded every little rain. That it's a contractor. My parents have to go after the contractors that built the house. Or graded the lawn. So it's not the city. We've already, mom and dad already came to the city and that's what their advice. So. That's my advice to these people.
Well, and I guess here would be my concern is that if we put, if we get our hands in it too much. Then if something does go wrong, does that switch the liability over to us? Where right now, we're out of it.
Well, we are involved. It's going to cost money and someone's going to have to pay for it. To, to have. An engineer come and check it. Somebody's going to have to pay for it, which would be the homeowner. Which.
This is, to me, this is another thing that we require builders to do, but there's no checks and balances at the end. This, this all came down way back when there were some properties that were filled in and in water areas that. Walkouts that should not have been walkouts. Matter of fact, they were probably, I don't know if it was an engineer's mess up or.
No, no engineer. The builder just didn't.
Should have been a minimum opening lot and whether they were or not. They were a minimum opening lot and they build a walkout on it, then that would have been on the, the builder, not on the city. And that person was the one that came in and did all the bitching, and that's what this all came down to.
So, six years ago.
Also that you can't put your water onto adjacent properties.
Been the unwritten rule for a hundred years.
I know.
But that's, that's not true, because the water's going to go whichever direction it goes. You can't change that. If you can't put your water on adjacent properties, then where's it supposed to go?
Neighbor behind you is like this.
There was a berm in there and it got taken out.
The metals in their last subdivision had to put a. Virtually a ditch in the back of between their lots, so all the water in the backyard ran to those. Well, the reason we were in, we have this is from a development prior to. But in their development, they had, they had to show that there was a, an area in the backyard that all the water ran to, so it all.
Well, sounds like that particular builder may be willing to do so.
And I can see where it's doable for staff to inspect if it's a new house. It may be harder in Jody's parents' case where.
Nothing you can do.
So, well, yeah, at some point we'll need to hit that harder, what you guys.
You, you require it, we should check it.
That's. Far as I'm concerned, we require it, we should check it.
Or if it doesn't. If it goes wrong, we want to acquire a site plan. It shouldn't, it shouldn't pan out. And if it goes wrong.
They should follow it. If we approve.
They should follow it.
So it should be part of their, should be part of the builder's onus to prove that they checked it, in my opinion.
We may not have to check it, and it should be just fine. It's when they.
The problem, the problem what happens is, the problem doesn't show up till the homeowner owns the lot and the builder is like. So, well, they can still, you can still check your, you follow. Are you gonna, but you're gonna find the homeowners for that? That's the problem. No, you can, yeah, the builders check it before they. That's what I mean, I mean. That's what I'm saying. Yeah, and that should be part of the thing if we're going to require it, because part of us being around here and part of the city being here is also to protect the people who live in this town. And that means from people who don't follow what they put and we approve in a plan.
You've had apples.
That means before we do an occupation report, I mean, uh, give them a occupant occupancy.
Well, it should be done before that. Should be, there should be a rough grading. You want it.
Part of the permit.
Before the sod gets put down.
Might cost a little bit of money, but most notable builders aren't going to have a problem with it. I mean, if you're not good, then yeah, you'll probably come in and complain about it. I don't want to have to do that because I suck at this.
Well, it's not like they get their money back. If we're going to charge you two hundred and fifty dollars. No, they don't. They don't get it back.
Not if we hire an engineer to check.
We gotta go out and check it.
That's going to have to be engineers, yeah. Part of theirs. They want occupation permit. They gotta provide it to you.
Well, it's another, that's, that's a reason. I mean, we're going to be increasing our building permit fees back to the normal schedule. Yeah, I think we are. Going to go back to the normal.
They've gone back to normal. They went back to normal.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna go way up, so.
Yeah, they have. They're like, they're like four thousand.
We could justify it, uh.
Inspections that should be on their inspection sheet is. Rough grade prior to.
Before occupancy.
It's just like you can't put drywall on a framing without. You got how many other inspections?
I think we're all the same.
Okay.
We're all in agreement.
Compared to the rest of the inspection. But it stops, stuff like this.
It's not going to come from Terry Curtis, because he's not going to go out there and inspect it. It's going to have to come from an engineer going out there and surveying the lot. I've had internal discussions with B and K, and we'll, we'll bring something for the council before we.
I was just proposing, you don't put the onus to us to pay for it, put it on the builder.
Yeah, we'll, we'll bring a proposal before.
Okay, let's move on. City staff reports, any, any staff?
Roger, I have just an update. Yep. So to answer your question on the Greenview Drive parking, it's already actually established in the ordinance on the west side. There's no parking on Greenview Drive.
Really?
After construction's all done, then you can stop parking on both sides. Uh alright, we're back to comment, down to comments for mayor and council. I don't have anything, I guess. Buddy?
I got, no, I got, so just real quick, if we're going to buy some no parking signs, as you're coming into town. From the. From the south, there's no parking signs along Baker there. Them some bitches are so faded, they just look like they're white. So maybe we ought to buy some. Or take them down and let people park there.
Me seem to spend ten thousand a year on signs.
I don't know where we got those, but they.
Alright, motion to adjourn, anyone? Alright, motion to adjourn, anyone?